Need to turn that on.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Happy to have you here. I'd like to call the July meeting of the East Central Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Ms. Beriantos, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Sir Del Brazo.
President.
Michael Feller. Victor Garza.
Here.
James Mulkey.
Here.
John Massengo.
Here.
Mr. Bryant, we have a forum.
Thank you. Moving on to item two, the prayer and the pledge. Mr. Toscano, please.
Sir. Ms. Colas?
If you'll please stand and bow your head. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and time to gather as leaders of this community. We pray you will instill in us courage in our initiatives, good judgment in our choice of the right means, and determination which in spite of failures assures success. We ask that you guide us away from rivalries, sensitivities, discourtesies, pride, and everything which distracts, divides, or discourages us from our mission. Lord, we pray blessings on this community and for the good health and safety of everyone in it. In your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. All right. Item three, awards and recognitions. Mr. Toscano, please.
Sir, Mr. President, trustees, we've got really special recognitions this evening. We've got some students and their sponsors from three different of our organizations at the high school that actually qualified and competed at the national level, and we've got some representatives from those teams here today. And Amanda Holman will recognize them and introduce them to us.
Good evening, Mr. Bryant, Mr. Toscano, members of the board. It's really a pleasure to be here this evening to recognize some of our outstanding career and technical education students who've qualified for and competed at national level competitions this summer. We'll be honoring eight students and four advisors this evening for their accomplishments. So first, I'd like to recognize our Future Business Leaders of America, FBLA, Mr. Corbin Lubyansky. You can come on here. Also, Corbin's advisors, Melissa Grund and Mr. Sean Lewis. Corbin competed in the business law competition at the state level where he advanced to national competition. During this event, he was administered a 60-minute exam over legal systems, contracts and sales, business organization, property laws, agency and employment laws, negotiation instruments, insurance, secure transactions, bankruptcy, consumer protection, product, and personal liability, computer law, domestic and private law. Corbin is also currently serving as the area four vice president for the state of Texas. We'd also like to recognize Corbin's parents if they were here to like stand and be recognized as well. If you'll please help me to congratulate Corbin, his parents, and his advisors on his accomplishment. Thank you. The next group we'd like to recognize is FCCLA, or the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. Students are Shirley Anne Martinez, Crystal Lebo, and Jordan Wiley, and advisor Karen Viatour. They competed in the chapter service display event. These students planned and executed their service project, Pancakes with Santa, held for the community at East Central High School in December. They then presented their project and results to a panel of judges. The FCCLA team earned a silver medal and placed ninth in the entire nation. Will the parents of these students please stand to be recognized as well? Please help me to congratulate these students. And last, but certainly not least, we'd like to recognize the Texas Association of Future Educators, or TAFI organization. Students are Brelin McGoine, Alyssa Ramirez, Corina Contreras, and Gabby Lowry. Their advisor was also Ms. Karen Viatour and Ms. Bailey Collins. These students competed in a competition entitled Ethical Dilemma. These ladies were given a scenario pertaining to education and had to determine if it was ethical or unethical and how their findings should be exhibited to the judges. These findings were then presented. We'd also like to recognize the parents of these students. If you're here, you please stand and be recognized. Congratulate these students with us. We're very proud of these students and their accomplishments, and we look forward to a great year coming up with them as well. So, thank you for recognizing them.
Very good. Very good.
Next, tonight, we're going to be recognizing our business community partners through the TASVI recognition program. Here at East Central, we know the value of the help that we've received from our community and business partners, and we deeply appreciate it. We are pleased to announce that the generosity that you have shown is now recognized at the state level, and that the Texas Association of School Boards joins us in recognizing your support of schools. As I call you up individually, I'd like to present a recognition packet to you in grateful appreciation for all that you've done for this school district. Inside, you will find a letter thanking you and other materials about Texas public schools, including a window decal and countertop sign that we hope you will post and encourage others to follow your lead to stand up for Texas public schools. So, first, we would like to call up the Land Heritage Institute representatives, Mr. Mark Land Heritage Institute is a living land museum on 120,000 acres neighboring Toyota. The property has a unique place in Texas history with archaeological, cultural, educational, environmental, historical, and recreational significance. Mark and Peggy Opelt, longtime supporters of East Central ISD, have graciously been collaborating with the district this year to grow some amazing opportunities for our students and faculty. Legacy Middle School completed their service learning project on the property, which included for students, oiling a 125-year-old chuck wagon, removing an invasive plant species called stick tight, oiling the inside of the historic White House, and cleaning the outdoor kitchen. Peggy envisioned the day's activities and served as the property's historic guide for the projects. In addition to the exceptional programming she offered, Peggy also agreed to establish internships for seven of our CTE students for next year. Our fashion design practicum students will be researching historical dress and producing period pieces with materials provided by the Land Heritage Institute, while students from graphic design and architectural design will also be completing customized projects during the 1819 school year. We are inspired by their commitment and focus on youth stewardship. We're thrilled Land Heritage Institute is collaborating with our district for the benefit of students, growing their own voices in civic engagement, and providing experiences related to college, career, and military readiness through internships or practicum experiences at Land Heritage Institute. Thank y'all. Next, we would like to honor the Prouskis from Prouskis Meat Market. If y'all would please come forward. Prouskis Market has allowed the East Central Future Farmers of America meat teams to practice in the meat market both before and after school. Mr. Prousky and the staff allowed for students to grade the carcasses in preparation for the National FFA contest in October of 2017. If the team needed help in purchasing certain types of meat products, he gladly ordered what they needed, many times allowing for the team to purchase meats at cost. He orders specialty meats and wraps the meats just like the team requests. He also allows boosters and other student groups to hold barbecue plate sales for various fundraiser events, as well as offering exceptional customer service for these events. He also allows student groups to host car washes at the market. Mr. Prousky has offered support to both culinary and food science teachers at East Central High School by providing the same exceptional customer service to their programs as with the FFA program. And with his location being so close to the high school, it opens him up for a barrage of donation requests, but he's always, always willing to give something to support our students. Because of his support, our students are better prepared for career, a career in the food and livestock industries, and we appreciate y'all very much.
Thank you.
And next, we're proud to recognize the Junior Achievement of South Texas, and we've got Ms. Felicia Barrow here to accept. Junior Achievement of South Texas has worked with East Central ISD for a number of years in supporting the development of financial literacy, work readiness, and entrepreneurial skills. Since 2004, Junior Achievement has partnered with our school district organizations to provide K through three campuses with financial literacy instruction. Each year, Junior Achievement works with our high school campus teachers and students to provide training, kits, and onsite support to ensure that our school clubs and organizations deliver the best financial literacy lesson at no cost to the district, because then those kids go down to our elementary schools and present the Junior Achievement financial literacy lessons. To date, Junior Achievement has invested over $66,000 in materials to support this endeavor. In addition to this programming, Junior Achievement also provides financial literacy lessons to eighth-grade students and teachers. Teachers work through the units with their students as they focus on personal financial planning and career exploration. The culmination of their work is a trip to Finance Park, where students are challenged to apply their financial knowledge as they work through various scenarios to develop and commit to a personal budget. At the high school level, they partner with a group of avid students in the 2013 pilot program to create an entrepreneurial curriculum. Students were tasked with creating and running their own businesses from start to finish. As time has gone on, those businesses have continued to evolve. The lessons and countless opportunities for our students to engage in financial literacy curriculum and projects would not be possible without the support from Junior Achievement of South Texas. Because of their support to our community, we are able to grow the leaders of tomorrow, and we thank you.
We're going to take a short pause now and let those of you who need to go, go, and those of you who need to stay, stay. But before you leave, we saw some exceptional students this evening, great products of the school district, students that we're all exceptionally proud of, and it can't happen without the public partnership that we have in education. So, we've seen also tonight, the public has stepped up and helped us educate these students, given them role models, and it just seems to work. Kids going to national competition, public supporting schools, this is a synergy that works. So, thank you very much, everybody, for all that you've done. Appreciate it. We're going to take a 10-minute recess. All right. We're going to get started again. Our next agenda item is public comments. We've had no one sign up to speak before the board, so we'll move on to item five, superintendent reports. Item A, 2017-2018 Curriculum Year End Report.
Trustees, in your electronic packet, beginning on page nine and running through page 17, you'll see the complete year-end report for the curriculum department. Taffy Hertz will provide some highlights from that report to the board this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Bryant, Mr. Toscano, and members of the board. I would like to start out with going over our goals that we had for this year. Our first one was our culture and climate goal. For many years now, we've done a mid-year survey, but this year, we decided to add an additional question to it about basically how campus people feel whenever they're working with us. Do they feel valued, and do they feel like we're listening to their needs? So, this was baseline data since we hadn't had this question on there before, but we were shooting for 80% initially. As you can see, three of the six subdepartments did reach that 80%, and then relatively closed in a couple of other areas, but now, at least with that baseline data, we know where we need to do some work to improve in that area. We also had a goal about communication, so again, for many years, we've had the Workplace Dynamics Survey. One of the questions on there had, or one of the categories had to do with communication, specifically being well-informed about decisions. So, previously, our department was 5% above the district average, and so our goal was to increase that by 5% so that we would be 10% above the district average. Now, we did do a new survey this year. We went with a different vendor, and so it's not an exact comparison, but there was a category related to internal communication, and on that particular one, we were 18% above the district average. So, a very important role that we have in our department is to provide resources to the campuses. So, you may recall that last year, last spring, we did a curriculum audit to see basically what type of resources, what type of curriculum we had for each of our hundreds of courses that we offer here in the district. And once we evaluated that, we had determined that we had, that we were 18%. And what I mean by that is actual official curriculum that all teachers would be expected to follow. It's not to say they didn't have resources, but that this would be that they had a year at a glance and, you know, that sort of thing. And so, at that point, we were at 18%, and our goal over this year was to get to 30% because it is a three-to-five-year plan, and we actually, at the end of this year, had reached 40%. All of the core courses at all the grade levels do have at least some basic curriculum now, and many of the elective areas, and we'll continue to work on that in the upcoming years. We also wanted to look at what sort of impact we were having on campuses and specifically on instruction and student achievement. So, we did have a scoreboard that we kept this year, and our goal was to spend at least 40% of our time on campuses, coaching, providing feedback, observing, and basically supporting the system. 60% of the time was spent on doing all that curriculum writing that you saw on the previous slide, and then 40% coaching. And so, our fall results were 42%, and spring results were 46%. So, we did exceed our goal there. Another way we wanted to impact campuses, we wanted campus admin to be able to see a difference when they were doing their campus learning walks in the curriculum that they saw going on in the classrooms. So, a portion of those learning walks, it's called Focus on the Curriculum, and there were some specific things that campus admin would look for when they did go on their learning walks. And so, our goal was that we would increase each of those components by 5%. And so, on the left, you see what our, it says current status. That's what it was at the end of last year. And so, then the spring 2018 results, what those categories are, we wanted to see if the learning target was evident, if it was aligned to grade-level standards, if it was aligned to the scope and sequence, and if the students understood what their targets were for the day. We did increase by at least 5% in every category except for two, and we still did see an increase in those categories. So, there was very much a focus this year on trying to make sure that the content that was being taught in the classes was at the right grade-level standard and was in alignment with the curriculum that the course required. So, those were our department goals for this year. These were our areas that we really focused on, our curriculum management and planning. That started with the curriculum audit last year, which I talked about a little bit with that one goal, but we expanded that this year. We did a lot of work on creating curriculum where we didn't have it. We also had a partnership with UT, and they came in and did some training, and we worked on determining critical content for our courses. Using that, we developed proficiency scales that will help us in our standards-based grading program, and our next step coming up is to get some additional training on assessment and then helping to train teachers on creating assessments that are aligned to the curriculum. And we do have, we have critical content, like I said before, determined in all of the core areas at all grade levels and many of the elective areas. I'm not going to talk too much about community-based accountability system. We spent quite a bit of time in June talking about that, but that has been one of the things that we did really focus on this year, getting that set up, and we do already have some dates set up to continue with that work to determine the rest of the pillars. A big focus this year was on college and career readiness. We had that grant from National Math and Science Initiative where we were focusing on increased participation and performance in AP, and we did see some large gains in that area. We had a big focus on increasing industry certifications that are available for our students. And we also did a lot of work on increasing our business partnerships, which we have in several of our CTE programs, and now have some MOUs in place where we can increase our practicums and internship opportunities for our students. Early childhood was a big focus this year. As you know, this was our first year that we worked with pre-K for SA. We got, we had a lot of training that was available for our pre-K teachers. We had a grant, and now we have a second grant where we've been able to buy some supplies, purchase some curriculum. Our next step is to do a lot of training with the teachers on the high-scope curriculum and start working towards eventually when we do have pre-K at all of our elementary campuses, so really trying to build up the teacher skills and the materials that we have available for the students in anticipation of that. And then within special populations, we had several things that we worked on. We have what we call our super scheduler that our wonderful Mr. Holbert created for us. It's a tool that the campuses can use to help them make sure that the students in our special populations, special education, bilingual, and GT, are having their needs met and have the correct placement within classrooms. We also, as you know, had boundary transitions, and so looking closely at special populations, making sure that we were making good decisions on where to place certain settings for the classes, and work on staffing and everything with the new changes that we have. We did contract with Stetson to do a dyslexia program review, and they have come back with some recommendations for us. We are going to be looking at some staffing, assessment, and identification, and professional development. And lastly, we wanted to make sure that all of our bilingual students had access to a good amount of Spanish literacy materials. We did feel like we were lacking in that area, and so we identified several materials that we could purchase, and they were purchased and put on the campuses, so we're hoping that that will assist the students in that program area. So, these were kind of our big areas of focus. There's a whole lot more, as Mr. Toscano said in your board book. There's a rather lengthy report giving you lots more details about everything that we worked on this year, and I would be happy to answer any of your questions.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Hertz? I think we're good. Thank you, ma'am. Item B, personnel report.
Trustees, this month's personnel report is rather lengthy. Again, as is customary this time of year, it begins on page 19, runs through page 27, and what you'll see this month is a lot less on the resignation side and a lot more on the employee recommendation side. And so, as always is the case, if you have any questions or would like any additional information about any of the items in the personnel report, please let me know.
Item C, ECISDDOT-Senovia Solutions. Here Comes the Bus.
Here Comes the Bus. Yes, sir. So, in your electronic packet, beginning on page 29, is a really brief slideshow. What I wanted to do is share with the board a product that we are considering adding to our transportation service. What Here Comes the Bus does in general, and we did pilot it on four buses, I believe, this past year, is it first and foremost places GPS on all of our buses. What it will enable us to do is obviously track where our buses are, things like how fast they're traveling, what routes they're taking, if they're sitting and idling for an inordinate amount of time. But more importantly, for parents, it'll allow them to get a notification on their phone that the bus is coming and how far away it is, which we know has been a significant problem for parents, not knowing where the bus is. Did I miss the bus? Is it running late? They'll know exactly where it is. And again, the pilot of that in the spring was wonderful, worked as advertised, but it also does many other things. Our initial intent is to use that functionality, but in your report there, it shows that it can do some other things, some other functions that we could add going forward if we so chose. When we have sub-drivers, one of the challenges is that they don't know the route. We have hard copy routes that they'll follow in a binder. Here Comes the Bus allows that to be electronic, and the driver wouldn't even need to know the route. It'll tell them where to go, kind of like you use Google on your phone for. It'll also allow bus drivers, if we choose this functionality in the future, to integrate with time clocks. They won't actually have to go into the office, clock in, they can go straight to their bus, improve efficiency, and get on the road as soon as possible. It'll allow also for them, for us, to electronically log daily pre- and post-trip inspections that drivers are supposed to do, pre- and post-trip, instead of relying on those to be done hard copy and turned in. We'll know in real time whether those inspections were actually done, and if there are issues, they'll be reported immediately in real time so that the mechanics can be aware and get those things addressed expeditiously. It'll also track ridership, so knowing when kids got on the bus, what kids are on the bus, and when they got off. So, those are all some additions that we could add to the functionality, but initially, as I mentioned before, what we're hoping to be able to do is get GPS on the buses and roll out that Here Comes the Bus platform for parents in the fall. We're in contract negotiations at this time, working on some language in the contract with legal. We do believe that if we choose to execute the contract, that they'll be able to get that hardware on the buses, on the fleet, before we roll out in the fall. Am I correct? It's about 45 minutes a bus, and they've assured us that they'll be able to get that done before we start the school year. The cost is there for you. We would be entering into a five-year contract with options within that, which is what we're working out as we speak. And these are not new funds. These are funds that are, that have been budgeted within the department's budget that they chose to move around and add this functionality to improve service and improve communication with our families for our students who ride the bus every day.
Good.
So, we have staff from the Transportation Department. If trustees have any additional questions about the product.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
So, the annual fee we're paying even for the summer months, if we choose, I mean, do we have a choice to pay monthly or annually?
So, you want to speak to that, Matt or Don?
So the annual fee we're paying even for the summer months, if we choose, I mean, we, do we have a choice to pay monthly or annually?
So you want to speak to that, Matt or Don?
The contract that, that ASPIA proposed, uh, is a representative that we're dealing with, her name is Asprey Gates, uh, the contract was proposed for, uh, all one hundred and twenty-one buses. Uh, that conversation hasn't, to my knowledge, whatever we talked about is, is annually over, uh, that's the overall annual cost. We have not had conversations regarding, you know, can we de-activate certain buses for over the summer. Right now, we currently use a very small amount for our summer routes, um, but it's kind of important to have as many active at, at one time as possible to do, to do stuff, and stuff like that. So, um, I'm guessing you answered that question. I think, I think the reason why they're, they're charging, uh, monthly is because we're leasing a piece of equipment that's installed on the bus and it would be, um, a constant condition to take that piece of equipment out and then reinstall it a couple months later. So, they don't have access to that equipment, so therefore they're, they're leasing a year.
And the five-year, the life of the contract is, uh, after the life of the contract, you have to renew this contract?
Uh, we have the option to renew the contract.
So, so that, so that equipment don't belong to the district?
Correct.
Okay. So we renew it in another two hundred and twenty-five thousand, am I right?
Uh, we have to renegotiate the terms of the contract.
We have to renegotiate it, okay.
So I got looked into actually buying equipment? I mean, for the...
It's all on the lease deal that, that she talks about, it's horrible, it's bogus. It's not, there's not an option to buy it or anything.
Yeah. Rent to buy, none of that option, huh? Rent to buy, or lease to buy, or whatever.
At, at the conclusion of the contract, we're, we're targeting the...
Sounds good, though.
Yeah, so some, some of the things that we typically see with this kinda thing, technolat- technology oriented is the life cycle of that technology is such that you really wouldn't wanna own that and hold on to it after three to five years. There's upgraded, more efficient, more effective technology. Um, and so you generally see these kinds of arrangements for technology hardware.
Makes a lot of sense, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody thinks anything during the rest of the month, please get ahold of Mr. Toscano. And item D, construction update.
Mr. Selby. They are ready to be wowed. No more gloom and doom, good news only.
It is good news.
All right. We have pictures?
We do have pictures.
Did you take those pictures?
I did take those pictures and you will be able to tell in just a moment. Oh, that's the wrong one. Should've worn my other glasses.
We'll be able to tell it was a picture or we'll be able to tell what's on the picture?
Somebody put the PowerPoint down at the bottom where I was. I wonder who did that. All right. Once again, another outstanding update on board, uh, for the board for the two thousand sixteen bond program. And this is the most current phenomenal picture of the panoramic view of, uh, tradition. Still has the outhouses and now it has tractors in front, so we're making improvements. Uh, it is important to know that we are beginning to reach conclusions on many parts of the, um, of the Tradition Elementary School. We did a punch for the, uh, gymnasium on the thirteenth and the kitchen and cafeteria area, actually today. And so those areas are, are, uh, complete for the most part. They had some punch items that they'll take care of, but nothing that was, uh, overly serious, mostly cosmetic and, uh, things that can easily be addressed. The, uh, section B of the, uh, areas, uh, is the administration, uh, suites and that we'll be punching that on Tuesday next week. You can tell that they weren't ready for the punch today. The library, uh, also will be punched not until August seventh. Uh, the photo on the left is from the hallway. Uh, you'll notice that, uh, it has the framing for the glass. Most of the glass is in. And then, uh, the photo on the right is the interior. It's a little hard to get good photos 'cause there, it didn't have all the lights on in there. Uh, section C is the, uh, ca- pre-kender, uh, through, uh, first area. And you can see on the left, a typical classroom is close to being complete, but isn't there yet. Restrooms on the right, we have the sinks on the outside for them to come out and wash their hands. Uh, those are fairly close to being completed, all the tile and fixed, uh, installed, the fixtures and so forth. We'll be punching that on the thirty-first. Uh, section D was already punched out on July tenth and is, uh, is complete and once again had fairly minor, uh, items that needed to be addressed in that punch list. The exterior, uh, we have the playground equipment in. Uh, on the right, you, there's still some, uh, additional landscaping that needs to take place, planting of, uh, shrubbery and trees, getting, uh, the rest of the topsoil in and so forth. Uh, transportation slit, satellite facility, uh, uh, that's a mouthful. Uh, you have, uh, for the most part, it's completed, uh, except for the building on the right needs to be finished out. Still has some metal, uh, 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 work that needs to be done to close it in completely. Uh, we don't have our modular building in yet. That won't be right now. Scheduled to be, uh, delivered until, uh, August. Uh, once it was ordered, they, the timeframe to get that produced was much longer than anticipated, but we'll get that in. As you know, we also did improvements to FM thirteen forty-six and fifteen eighteen. Those have been done. We have punched that. Uh, there are some areas, so for example, the flashing lights that you see on the, in the left-hand photo, the right, upper-right portion of that photo, I think there still needs to be some signage that goes with that instead of just lights flashing by themselves. But most of the rest of it is, they need to make sure that the, uh, grass gets established better than it is, pick up some ra- rocks and trash and basically pretty simple stuff. So I just put together a kind of a synopsis or summary of where we're at, uh, on, on tradition. So just chronologically, we've already punched out section D, those, that two-story section with, uh, most of the classrooms in it. Then gymnasium's been punched out. The cafeteria and kitchen, today we punched it. Admin will be punched out on the twenty-fourth. That's next Tuesday. The thirty-first, we'll punch out the, the classrooms and then the library on the seventh. We're anticipating substantial completion and certificate of occupancy on August tenth. But, uh, we're working with the City of St. Hedwig and we're gonna be able to go ahead and start moving in prior to that C of O, uh, so we can get furniture. We can't get our staff in there before that time, but we'll start moving items in there, uh, fairly quickly. All right? If you look at the, uh, Performing Arts Center construction, it's continuing. Uh, if you recall some of the photos from the past, it's much cleaner than it was. You have the foyer, uh, on the left that has the memo, uh, kinda the, uh, memorial stairs going up. Um, on the right is, are the built-in risers for the choir room, which is gonna be extremely impressive once it's complete. This is a view of the auditorium from the stage itself. Um, uh, it, it's gonna be a, uh, phenomenal auditorium once it's completed. It's already taken a great deal of shape and, uh, once it's done, it's something we'll be extremely proud of. The band hall, uh, on the left, you see photos of the winger, uh, practice units that have been installed. Four out of the six have been installed. The other two should be getting installed by the end of this week. On the right, you see what was the drama black box prior to this time. Uh, that is now gonna be a, uh, ensemble practice room and, and also, uh, storage. You see some of the, the lockers on the right there for their instruments. Uh, that's turning out really nice, really is. Uh, the band, uh, renovation will punch and get a temporary certificate of occupancy on, uh, all of those areas, both the band and the choir drama area on the twenty-seventh of this month. Uh, if we do get that TCO on that day, which we should, uh, then we'll start moving in the following day. As soon as we get the TCO, we'll move in the following day that we have that. Performing Arts Center, the punch and certificate of occupancy on that. I don't anticipate that potentially until the September fourth timeframe. And, uh, I know that we were told something different from that, but that's just my honest appraisal of where we will be when we get in there. Once we get that certificate of occupancy, of course, we'll start moving in as soon as we can. Or we'll be the same on this following day. Salado Intermediate School, we have phase one construction, which are the two additions and the renovations to the fine arts area. Uh, those will be, uh, continuing to be worked on. We'll be doing a punch on that later this month. I'll give you a, a list of all those dates in just a moment. Uh, phase two is completion of the renovations to the gymnasium. We do have air conditioning going in there, that's a nice thing. And then the wing C renovation, as you see, uh, still have above ceilings, some, a little bit of work there, uh, but a, a lot of the, uh, renovation to the classroom itself is close to being completed. So in phase one, which are the additions and the renovations to what will be referred to as the fine arts, uh, area, will be punched on the twenty-sixth. Uh, we'll start moving in on the twenty-seventh to those areas. Phase two, which is, uh, the rest of the gymnasium being completed and wing C being completed, will punch on August seventh and begin moving in on the eighth. We also have two additional portables for temporary, uh, use during this next year that have already been delivered and will be getting, uh, uh, hooked up and ready for use before school starts. Harmony Phase One, as you know, is already completed and we've moved, uh, a lot of furniture in there. Phase two are classrooms, uh, portions of the classrooms at the back of the school, what was the Kinder area and then right outs, uh, right as you walked in from the Kinder area to the main campus, that area is being renovated. And then also the gymnasium's being renovated and the cafeteria. Uh, gymnasium, um, will have air conditioning and all of that is anticipated. Uh, once again, phase one, we already, uh, have gotten that C of O and have moved in. Uh, phase two punch and temporary C of O will be on August tenth and move in on the eleventh. Con Valley, phase one construction, uh, was completed just, uh, this past week. We did the punch and got a TCO, Temporary Certificate of Occupancy for that, uh, just this past Monday and Tuesday timeframe. Phase two is a massive undertaking and, uh, renovating the, the office areas and the classrooms and restrooms right, uh, next to those, uh, those administrative suites. We're also redoing the flatwork in the front. We'll have a canopy out front, uh, by the time phase two is complete. You can see that on the left. Uh, the photo on the right is, uh, Ms. Wurzbock's office, or will be. So we have temporary C of O for phase one, the new addition. Uh, we're gonna start moving items in there, actually, I believe tomorrow. Uh, phase two punch and C, TCO is gonna be on August fourteenth with move in on the fifteenth. Sinclair Phase One is completed back at the end of May. Um, and, uh, we've already, uh, started moving stuff in there. Phase two is a cafeteria, gymnasium and a major section of the ca- of the classrooms. Uh, as you come out of the new additions, coming back into the building, that's where those new classrooms will be completed, uh, for this, uh, phase two timeframe. Also on the left, a new canopy in the front of the school will be completed during this phase as well. Uh, you see the photograph of the gym, it's very close to being completed. That's on the right. So we have phase one complete, move-ins already taken place. There'll be some additional move-in as we have, uh, other areas opened up to us. Uh, phase two gym, uh, will be punched and TCO on July thirty-first, move in the, uh, just a few days later. Uh, phase two cafeteria and classrooms will be punched, the rest of that project, phase two be completed by August ninth and moved in, start moving in the following day. John Glenn Annex, we're currently in the design phase. Uh, construction documents should be completed by September. We'll submit those to, uh, market for proposals, come back to the board for your approval on those on October nineteenth. Board meeting, uh, scheduled to begin in November and be completed no later than July. And that, of course, is all out of fund balance. DCDC is still on hold, but we will begin working towards designing that, uh, within a short time. And I will be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions?
Looking good.
Jim, how are we on the timeline that we were given last board meeting with Tradition and the Performing Arts Center?
Well, there's a few, a couple areas where we're ahead of schedule, but most of them are behind, as you can tell.
Yeah.
So, for example, at Tradition, um, the wing D, we, we were able to punch that about five days earlier than what they hadn't given us. Uh, A and, uh, B will be from four to nine days later than what they had, uh, given us. Uh, the library's gonna be almost, um, at least three weeks later than what we anticipated. And, um, building C about ten days lon- longer. But the fortunate thing is that I think they, I really do believe they will hit the, these dates that they've given us now because they're starting to hit them. Uh, they are realistic. Some of the others, as I kinda mentioned at prior meetings, is that some were, if you were to ask me, I wouldn't agree with all the dates they gave us. And so, uh, we'll be getting in there in, in time. Well, as Ms. Goram said, we'll be sliding in there. Just mentioned that, didn't we? The PAC, not, uh, the, the choir drama and band renovation's pretty close to what they said, actually, uh, which is good. Um, but the, uh, the, uh, PAC itself, the auditorium, uh, and all the classrooms and so forth are gonna be probably close to a month later than what they told us. Now, it is still possible that they can get in a little earlier, but it's not gonna be the fifteenth of August, I can tell you. That's what they said.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
And item E, upcoming events.
Couple of items I'd like to point out in your July and August calendar, trustees. In July, just wanted to note that the district will be returning to five-day work weeks, the week of July thirtieth. In August, you can see that's a very busy calendar for obvious reasons. A couple of things I wanted to point out, first of which is the new teacher orientation. Uh, that'll be at Heritage Middle School this year. Um, the date that we'll actually have the opportunity to meet and greet and, Mr. Bryant, you normally come and say a few words, uh, to that group. We'll be on the tenth. Uh, we'll be beginning at seven-thirty in the morning, breakfast from seven-thirty to eight-fifteen. And you have an opportunity to make a few comments, if any of you are available, uh, to swing by and meet and greet our new teachers, uh, at Heritage on the tenth. Uh, that would be fantastic. On the fifteenth, we'll have our annual kickoff event at the Florisville Event Center, as has been the case in recent years. Uh, the morning will kick off at eight-thirty, uh, and run till about eleven-thirty. Um, I encourage any of you that plan to attend and hopefully all of you can be there, uh, to get there a little early. Traffic tends to get, uh, a little heavy there on ninety-seven, it's two lanes. Um, we are gonna be using buses to transport staff in an effort to encourage carpooling as well and reduce traffic. But, uh, if you plan on attending, plan on getting there a little bit early before we start at eight-thirty. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting will be the sixteenth of August, uh, as is always at six-thirty. First day of school, August twenty-seventh. And our annual Meet the Hornets event at the stadium on the twenty-ninth at the high school at seven PM. Am I really saying all that out loud? It's here.
All right. Anybody needs any additional information about any of those events, please contact Mr. Toscano. All right. We'll move into our action agenda this evening. Item six A, ECISD Districtwide Guidelines for Extracurricular, Co-Curricular and Student Groups.
Trustees, uh, I'm sure you've had an opportunity to look at this. There's very minor changes to this, uh, document this year, uh, but a couple of, of changes that are, that are worth, uh, making and pointing out for your consideration. are, that are worth making and pointing out for your consideration tonight. One specific change on page thirty-nine in the doc, in your electronic packet is in the document on, on that page is specific language around vaping. It's just a new trend that we've begun to see. We had a couple of incidents with vaping this year, but it wasn't specified in the document, so we had a little difficulty administering the guidelines without that language in there. Specifically, we wanted to build in a little flexibility there for us to address anything that was simulating smoking, whether or not it, it was a nicotine product or not, it's, it's not in alignment with our expectations for participation. And so we wanted that language in the document. Other than that, there were no other changes. Until you get to the end of the document, which is just a student and a parent acknowledgement, it's the same acknowledgement that always existed, but in this particular case, we felt that it would be more useful for parents, students and our staff to have a little initial line next to each of the items in the agreement to ensure that students and parents actually read through the document. It is often the case when they receive a lot of information at an annual meeting, that they, they glance over that and just get to the signature pages and sign everything they need to sign and don't always pay attention to the detail. We wanted to hopefully incorporate a mechanism that ensured that they're going to review the most important pieces of the document. And so that's included in there for your consideration as well. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have about the guidelines for next year.
Any questions about the guidelines? No? All right.
Mr. President, I recommend that the board approve the ECISD Districtwide Guidelines for Extra and Co-Curricular and Student Groups in grades seven through twelve, as well as the Substance Abuse Testing Guidelines as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent on the Districtwide Guidelines for Extracurricular Events. Chair will entertain a motion.
No move.
We have a motion by Mr. Garza, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Mulkey. Any comments? Questions? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion carries. Item B, consider and take action to order the November sixth, two thousand and eighteen trustee election for single-member districts one, two, five and seven.
Trustees, board approval is required for the election order for the district to conduct school board trustee elections on November sixth, two thousand and eighteen. Bear County Elections would administer both the early voting as well as voting on Election Day. A copy of the draft order is in your electronic packet, beginning on page forty-eight. Be happy to answer any questions about that order that you may have at this time.
Any questions? I believe we're in.
All right. Mr. President, I recommend board approval of the election order as presented.
Have a recommendation from the superintendent on the November sixth, two thousand and eighteen board elections call. Chair will entertain a motion.
No move.
We have a motion by Mr. Garza, is there a second? We have a second by Ms. Brazil. Any comments? Not? All in favor? Aye? All opposed? Motion carries. Item C, contract with Bear County Elections for the November sixth, two thousand and eighteen trustee elections.
Trustees, district's asking your consideration for approval, allowing us to enter into negotiations with Bear County Elections in an effort to partner in the administration of the election. This, what this does is it allows us to reduce the number across the county, reduce the number of polling locations, to reduce duplication, makes it more efficient, but it also makes it more cost-effective for the district. We don't know the number of entities that will partner with Bear County Elections, depending on the number of entities, sharing that cost will, will determine our actual cost, but we do anticipate an estimated cost of approximately forty thousand dollars should we have to conduct an election in partnership with Bear County. Again, there is a sample agreement of partnership with Bear County Elections in your packet. Believe it begins on page fifty-four for your review and we'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have about that item.
Any questions? All right. I think we're good, sir.
All right. Trustees, I recommend the board give the superintendent his designated approval to enter into a contract with Bear County Elections for the administration of the November sixth, two thousand and eighteen trustee election.
Thank you. We have a recommendation from the superintendent to contract with Bear County Elections for the November sixth, two thousand and eighteen trustee election. Chair will entertain a motion.
No move.
We have a motion by Mr. Garza, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Barrientos. Any questions? Comments?
Let's hope we run unopposed, we won't have to pay anybody.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? If not, we have a recommendation from the superintendent to contract with Bear County Elections for the November the sixth, two thousand and eighteen board trustee election. We have a motion by Mr. Garza, we have a second by Ms. Barrientos. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item seven, SB six ninety-three board resolution. This is a board resolution to bypass the cost of equipping school buses with the three-point harnesses, as we discussed at, at our last meeting. Anyone have any questions about that? If not, chair will entertain a motion.
No move.
I recommend that we approve the board resolution, SB nine, six ninety-three, consider to approve the resolution determining the district's budget does not permit purchase of the three-point seatbelt buses.
We have a motion by Mr. Massengill, is there a second? We have a second by Ms. Barrientos. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Does any board member wish to have an item pulled from the consent agenda?
No.
If not, chair will entertain a motion on the consent agenda?
No move.
We have a motion by Mr. Garza to accept the consent agenda as presented, is there a second?
A second.
We have a second by Mr. Mulkey. The consent agenda is approved via unanimous consent. We will now go into executive session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation. So, the board of trustees on July nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, beginning at seven thirty-five PM, convened in a closed meeting in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Government Code Sections five-five-one point zero-seven-one, Consultation with Attorney and five-five-one point zero-seven-four, Personnel Matters. All right. The board ended its closed meeting at eight forty PM. On July the nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, no action was taken in the closed meeting. Before we call for adjournment, do you have anything else for us?
No, sir.
All right. That's, any board members have anything?
No, sir.
All right. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion by Ms. Brazil, is there a second?
There.
We have a second by Mr. Garza, we are adjourned via unanimous consent. Thank you very much.
Okay.